We have one for the Boy Scouts of America. With those members of the audience, please come forth with this presentation. Sponsor Councilman Quintana.
To the listening audience and to the general public, and those that are listening to us on cablevision, tonight I am very honored and pleasure, the pleasure of recognizing Boy Scouts as the council president. And I just, we're here because we're recognizing Boy Scouts. You know, Boy Scouts are very important in my life. I remember our Boy Scouts with the old Robert Tree Council. As a kid, I was in the Robert Tree Council. I remember the many troops that were in Newark. Recognizing volunteers are what makes scouting across this country. But here in Newark, here in Newark is very important. If I can have your attention because to the, can I have a, please? If anyone needs to speak, I would ask that you lower it down because we are trying to do something very important. Everyone is important. Those that are going to speak later, we're going to listen to you. You like to be listened to, so it is right to, to give respect to those that are serving. Thank you, Mr. Hertz. The Boy Scouts are very serious to us and very important to the city of Newark. And to me, it has always been important. Because throughout scouting, I think that that's, has helped so many leaders. And it's those volunteers like you, month after month, week after week. And we of the governing body really want to say this to you, thank you for continuing to help us. Help us at every level in terms of helping motivate young people through Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and et cetera. We need to continue. There are those that don't understand that there's foundation, and Boy Scouts have a foundation. A foundation for our children, for our youth, especially our young men who are grown up and sometimes they need that leadership, that leadership in volunteers. So we, the members of the municipal council, want to recognize you for this, what you have done to improve the quality of life, improving the quality of life for all our citizens, especially our young men. Thank you so much. Well, I know, her husband spent a lot of time raising money for Boy Scouts, I remember. And I see our councilman from the South Ward, Oscar James. It is for us an honor to say thank you. There's no way to say thank you, but just, I mean, it's just so great for volunteers to help young people, lift someone. Thank you so much, councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Quintana. Let me say, it's wonderful that traditions still exist. And the Boy Scouts has been a safety net for many, a young man who was looking for a way to meet the challenges of life. And so, I know all of you by name, you know I love you, I love what you do. And I just say to the councilman, to the councilman from the South Ward, your work has not been in vain. And for that, the residents of the city of Newark appreciate, and on tonight, we honor you.
Thank you. [applause]
It's just, it's real simple for me. The more we keep the kids busy and occupied in talent and learning certain skills that you learn in the scouts program is how we keep them off the streets. So, as long as you continue to do that, I will continue to support all those efforts because our young people definitely need to learn some of these skills, their life skills. So, I thank you and I take my hat off.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Fizer, I'm the Robert Tree District's volunteer vice chairman for volunteer leadership. And I'd like to recognize our fellow scouts after thanking the municipal council for recognizing the important mission of scouting. And we want to involve 10,000 children and youth in Newark. We need to raise 3,000 leaders. So we're looking for men and women who are willing to help their children learn skills. And with me tonight, I'd like to introduce Maureen Edelson, who is the scout executive for the Robert Tree Council. Eric Adams, who is assistant scoutmaster of troop 102. And the volunteer of the year for the Robert Tree, the historic Robert Tree District, and Mrs. Adams.
I just would like to say, I appreciate the council's recognition. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking in it? I would just like to say that I appreciate the council's recognition. I think the Boy Scouts was a good thing when I was coming up, and I think it could be a good thing again. You know, I love scouting and I love camping. And you might find some children who would love that also. So, if you have young boys ages of 11 to about 15, and they might show an interest in camping, please send them to me. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that my husband was very much involved in fundraising. And I've tried to carry on his legacy, Councilman James. I've adopted the Boy Scout troop at Chancellor Avenue Annex, and it's been a real pleasure and a real honor. And so, I'm especially personally delighted that the councilman thought enough of such an important program to honor you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Continue. We have one further. Major John James, sponsor councilman, uh, Quintana. Major John James, please come forward for this presentation.
We're talking about honoring folks. Too many times, we get to honor those that really deserve. And it was this weekend, we talked about it, the council, my council colleagues, of recognizing a young man who, who has history in this city. His father is the former mayor, Mayor Sharp James. And John and I have known each other a long time, Major John James. And he was in Afghanistan, and was injured, and is going back in two weeks. And what I felt, and my colleagues on the city council, was to recognize someone who has really served and serves our country, and is serving our country. And whether we agree with the war or whatever it may occur, you know, there are those of us that have feelings about those young men, young ladies who are serving our, our country. And to read in the newspaper that Major John James was wounded, again, it was a Newarker, someone who has history in this city. And to us, you know, again, I am very delighted because he has served with distinction in Afghanistan as a member of the United States Military Forces, and as a major. And I am tonight, and his wife is here, and my council colleagues, and we're very delighted that this young man is going back in two weeks, back to the battlefield. And you know, not too many come to the battle, come from the battlefield. And we recognize, we have to recognize those. And this young man deserves that recognition. Deserves that recognition because he has paved the way, and he is paving the way for us, and protecting our safety and our freedom. And that's important. The members of the Newark Municipal Council are delighted. Before we do the resolution, I would like my colleagues from the South Ward, two South Warders, and you're from the South Ward, to give their respect and honor to you, Major John James. Let me start with the council president, Mildred Crump.
Thank you. This is an easy task for me, to say thank you to John. He is one of my sons, and has been for almost as long as he's been on this earth and for as long as I've known him. I am happy that we are able to recognize you in the prime of your life, and when you're doing something that protects each one of us. And so, you know, you've been here in my prayers almost every night, and that when you return, that your tenure will be short, and that you will come back to us so that you can render the community service to this community that you so diligently want to give and that we want to accept. God bless you, you know I love you. Now you can kiss him, Oscar.
Well, I mean, to be honest, like the council president said, it's pretty easy. I mean, you're putting your life on the lines and creating a blanket that we sit here every day and live under. So, you know, put everything to the side. I thank you. And seriously, I take my hat off to you because, you know, like she said, you're creating a comfort for us. And I think a lot of days, our children and our people in this community forget about all those soldiers who are doing that. So, you know, my prayers are with you also, because I want you to return safe also. All right?
Major, Major John James also lived in the North Ward for a while. So he was from the South Ward, but he spent a lot of time in the North Ward. So, Councilman Ramos wanted me to let you know that. So Councilman Ramos from the North Ward will say some words.
Just very briefly, I'm very, really happy to see John. John and I have worked together for some time, and you know, my prayers are with you on a daily basis. I don't think the city does enough to recognize and honor, you know, the men and women who were in the service. And John is someone that has distinguished himself. You know, I sometimes catch the pictures on the internet of him, you know, with his uniform on, on duty. And one thing you won't know about John unless he tells you is that he's a great domino player. He's very known in El Cokee Social Club. And John, you know, I'm very happy that you're healthy, I'm happy that you're here, and you know, you're a real role model for many of our young men and women who have dedicated their lives and their career in the armed services. So, you have a friend here, now and always. Thank you.
I see councilman, another South Warder who said he wanted to be here, so, he said, don't stop, we didn't finish without you. Councilman, Councilman Donald Payne, Jr.
Thank you, thank you. Wow, this would have been a tragedy if I had missed this. But, you know, John, we've known your National Guard work for years. How long have you been in the Guard?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. And I can remember you going off and doing your exercises, but this Afghanistan and the war that we're in now, you're really putting that exercise to work. But very concerned for every American going over there about their safety. And when we heard about your injury, it really, you know, brought pause to us because one of our own, young man that I've grown up with in the South Ward, it really brought it to reality. You see the terrible numbers every day of soldiers being lost, but you know, when you can put a name and a face to it, it really, it really impacts you. So, we were very concerned, but we're glad to hear that you were all right. And when I saw you Saturday morning, I almost wanted to cry because, you know, people just don't really understand how much people really mean to you. Growing up, we've always been in the same neighborhood, different areas, different political things, sometimes on the same side, sometimes not. But when it comes down to it, we're all family in Newark. And we're just glad that we're here to tell you this in person. So thank God, I love you, and we're glad to have you home for the little time we do, and God bless you.
Councilman Ramos.
It's really an honor for me to be here and addressing you in person. I was privileged to meet your father Saturday, and I asked him how you were doing, and I, he said, no, he's back and he's, he's fine. And I'm really, really happy that you're fine, because you're a friend, you're someone that we have shared some good times, and I expect to share many more times with you.
So again, to his wife, thank you so much for being here with him. And I mean, being patient, waiting, and I know how hard it's been because John and I talked Saturday night, and I know what he, what he represents and what it means. And you know, again, someone asked about tonight, what time are you going to start it, you're going to start on time? I want to say this for the record tonight, I don't want to sound like I'm here to put anyone down, but when someone serves their country, it ain't about how much time we take. I'm very, very clear about that right now. If you have a problem with time, then you better adjust your time. Because when you're overseas and you're fighting for a country, you're not looking at the time. You're serving freedom, and you're fighting for our freedom. So again, to those that came in here before and have something to say, I wanted to remember and remind you that you may have a son or friend serving the nation, and we need to give the respect to those that serve us with dignity and respect. So again, I want to recognize you for what you have done in protecting the rights and protecting our rights. And you know, we want to make sure when you come back, no more injuries, you come back, we're going to do our celebration, welcome home, and you're going to come back home. We're going to have a party, and you know, Councilman, we're going to give them Medal of Honor. And one of the things we want to do is that we need to do something in this building. We want to recognize some of those folks. Some of those folks have served us, we need to capture that, and we need to put something in memory of those people who have served us well, those that are not here, and those who have fought for our freedom. Major John James, it is my honor, sir, to give this to you on behalf of the Newark Municipal Council, and our citizens, for protecting the freedom and working hard and diligently to help us fight for freedom. Thank you so much, to you and your family.
First and foremost, I want to thank God that my injuries were not more severe. I'd like to thank the council for taking the time out to present this resolution to me. I especially like to thank all those who gave support to my family while I was gone and when they received the news, especially assisting my wife through those troubled times when I wasn't in contact with her and rumors were rampant about my situation. And I'd also like to say that without your support here, we cannot do our jobs abroad. And when I come back, yes, we will party. And while I'm gone, I hope you continue to keep on your good work in serving the citizens of Newark. And again, thank the citizens of Newark for their support for myself, my family, and this council that you see standing here with me. Thank you.
[applause]
Rise for the singing of the national anthem and remain standing for the invocation.
[singing] Day and you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail, at the twilight's last belated. Whose broad stripes and bright stars, through the night, round the spire. O'er the ramparts we watched, were so brightly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, that my heart's beating, ah, gay, blue, through the night, that our flag, o'er, still there, o'er, saen, the stars, twinkle, in the night. O'er the land of the free, and the fly, the bird, o'er.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we're gathered here today in your name. And as we come in your name, I ask you to give us the guidance, not only for myself but for all my colleagues and all the people that stand here united. Because if we don't do it together as a people, we cannot do it in your name, Father. Father, as we stand here, we ask you to guide us in this light. As we have turmoil going on in the city, in the state, in this nation, and in this world, we beg you, Father, come to us, rescue us, Father, give us the deliverance that we need so that we can bring our troops home, so that we can cure our city, so that we don't have violence this summer. Father, guide us through this summer, pray for our children, allow them to walk in peace and love and harmony. Father, we stand here before you, giving you all of ourselves, in your name, amen.
We got a new Reverend. All right. Reverend James.
Madam President, in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice has been provided to the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, and to the public at large establishing the date and time of this meeting. Member will call of those present, please.
Amador.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Present.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Here.
Quintana.
Present.
Ramos.
Here.
Rice, absent.
President, present.
Hearing of citizens. Welcome to the Newark Municipal Council's hearing of citizens. Only those individuals who have signed up by the closing deadline will be permitted to speak this evening. When your name is called, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. At the end of two minutes, you will hear a bell indicating that you have one minute remaining for a summation. At the conclusion of your third minute, you will hear a second bell indicating that your time has expired. Please address all questions to the chair and not to individual council members. The first speaker is Bill Chappell.
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 My name is Bill Chappell. I live at 73 James Street in Newark. Thirty seconds of flight time from helicopter ground zero, the so-called heliplex. Madam President, honorable council members, good evening.
Good evening.
I appear before you tonight to urge that you stand with the citizens of this city and put a stop to this incredibly bad idea. To dump this helicopter airport next to people's homes, schools, and houses of worship in Newark is nothing less than an atrocity and is an environmental discrimination. Can anyone imagine placing this in a neighborhood in Short Hills or Scotch Plains? No. There would be such outrage, the political implications would be felt from Trenton to Washington DC. Why Newark? The powers to be already know about Newark's track record of accepting projects that have detrimental impact on the health and well-being of its citizens. They got away with placing the garbage incinerator in the state's largest city with the highest rate of childhood asthma. From a study by Gary Evans at Cornell University, I quote, "First and second grade school children chronically exposed to aircraft noise have significant deficits in reading. Children chronically exposed to noise also suffer from impaired speech perception," end quote. Senator Charles Schumer's webpage complains of the effects of, quote, "low-flying helicopters" this summer making life miserable for Long Island communities," end quote. Recently, while Mayor Booker was giving the State of the City address at NJ PAC, the police helicopter made the skies over Newark sound like Baghdad under attack. No doubt, economic benefits will be claimed to justify this outrage. Nonsense. Every property in Newark will be devalued. Who in their right mind will invest in or choose to live in a city notorious for its aircraft noise? All the city's much-publicized planning for new development will be undermined. According to Mike Grabell, Senior Vice President of Aviation Writers Association, the US helicopter accident rate is 30% higher than the US general aviation accident rate. I urge that we not let this misery be repeated in Newark. If a helicopter airport is necessary, would it not be better to place it on a barge in Newark Bay on the other side of the airport away from any neighborhood? Not only would it be a better place regarding the noise issue, but it would be safer for everyone if a chopper crashed in the bay instead of a school or someone's home. Should we not be able to enjoy our homes safely in peace and tranquility? And I'd just like to add one more thing. I was approached by a high official yesterday, it's in favor of this, and say it should be up to that particular neighborhood. And I violently disagree. It's a Newark issue. This is an issue for the whole city. We cannot stand here and sacrifice one neighborhood for the benefit of the rest. Thank you. Good evening.
Just want to state on the record that I too share, you know, many of these concerns that were put on the record by our speaker. We've requested a number of times to have an opportunity to sit down with the housing authority and some of the individuals that are working on the proposed heliport. I believe that meeting is now scheduled for Tuesday morning as a special meeting. At this point, this is just an idea. We have not received any kind of formal proposal through the administration, to the council, and not even to the planning board. And my understanding is that a few weeks ago, there was some testing done as far as noise. And you know, I really hope that we do have the opportunity to meet with these officials Tuesday. And I just want to advise and educate the public that this council has not been approached with any kind of formal proposal on this issue. So, and as a councilman representing that area, you know, I too have, you know, a number of concerns regarding this proposed project. And I've been working and talking to a number of residents in the area from the North Ward who are also concerned. So I appreciate your comments, sir.
Councilman Quintana.
Yes. You know, Titoboro Airport, its landing path is the same, that same path. Newark's airport is the same path, similar. My concern is the emotions. I remember going there when those buildings, when buildings exist there, and hope six dollars were bought there to bring housing. I don't remember Henry Cisneros bringing dollars to bring a heliport. I don't remember Henry Cisneros bringing dollars to bring a heliport to that area. Again, and I tend to agree with the Speaker. It would not be done elsewhere because elsewhere they were not allowed. And I don't think we need to allow this. I mean, there's enough properties elsewhere that can be done somewhere else where residents and children and all. But I just, and again, I'm very concerned. Very concerned, I'd like to know from HUD and housing, or the people in housing, that what we were supposed to have, that area was supposed to bring homes. That was the agreement, to bring homes there. Henry Cisneros walked into Newark, New Jersey with a big check to the Housing Authority and said, "We're going to make sure that this area is built again with an idea where recreation." So I don't mind if we had done something with recreation. A heliport is not a recreational venue for the city. So again, for those people who live in that area, got to get stuck with Titoboro, the traffic that comes in for Titoboro Airport, which is in the proximity of the same area, the flights coming out of Newark International Airport. So again, my concern is to the Housing Authority, they need to reconsider what they're doing because that land is too valuable just to have a heliport. That land, many people would displace some housing out of those projects there, our wash homes. Because those were projects that people lived and they were told that they were going to, the housing would occur. So again, I'm very puzzled that they have, someone has found time, or find time to decide to get a heliport.
Councilman Amador.
Well, I think for a change, I'm not yelling and screaming about the fact that something like this was dumped in the Iron Bound, like the prison, the incinerator, where the airport, where the planes flying very low close to the chimneys and so on. But I'm yelling and screaming and I'm upset about the fact that there was no, not, the process to find the place where to put this was not a very good process. There was no research done whatsoever in terms of finding a proper location for this type of operation. And the day after this thing came out in the newspapers and the media, I was approached by two people who reminded me that somewhere along the Turnpike, there's a couple of opportunities for the city to use. And I can think, for example, of the Essex Generating Station that belongs to PSENG that is abandoned, that is not too far from the airport, that could be used for this purpose, away from a residential community, not only one community, but quite a few communities. So my request and my recommendation that this be sent back to the administration to do a better research in terms of the location, the proper location, and keep it away from a residential community.
Councilman Gonzalez.
As Councilman Ramos indicated, this is just an idea. So at this point in time, we don't have definite plans to determine if we're going to have the heliport or not. So I would be premature at this time to express our concern, our opinion one way or the other, if we don't have anything to consider before us. When the time comes that we have a project and a proposal, then at that time, I believe the council should express its opinion as to whether this is a good project for Newark or not.
Councilman Payne.
Thank you. With all due respect, it is true, we don't have a plan in front of us, but I think we need to echo our sentiments and our displeasure with this even idea or notion upfront. We don't need any plans. We don't need this heliport in that area. There should be housing put back in that area for the residents of the city. Just even looking at the article once again, you know, there could be some questions on the relationships in terms of why and how and who are being able to move this forward. So I just think on behalf of the people that this is not something that is going to benefit the larger community but a specific few. So even before we get plans on it and discuss it, I'm putting it on the record that this is something that I'm against and we do not need in our residential areas.
Thank you. Hopefully, just a quick and final comment. Mr. Chappell, I want to congratulate you and the community for once again showing what real activism is like. But I also want to congratulate you on partnering with our friends from Kearney. I see them here today. And a community united is a community that, where the end result will be in favor of those people who live there. As has been said, it is an idea. However, I congratulate you on being proactive and not reactive. And so as soon as, we have our meeting on Tuesday, and I presume that, I missed part of the meeting yesterday, I presume that the community will be invited. We will be back in touch and we'll hear what the Housing Authority has to say. But I congratulate you and the community for not waiting until after it happens to respond, but to respond in advance of something that appears to have a negative impact on our community. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Miriam Bay.
Not appearing, Mr. Clerk.
My name is Frank Hertz. I live at 402 Mount Prospect Avenue. It's prostitutes and plastic people say it isn't so. When in the course of human events becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them together, whenever a government deprives and becomes destructive in depriving the people of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government. I'm here to put you on notice. As of today, the revolution towards May 10th, 2010, is on its way. We're going to alter this government and we're going to seek out in the days and the weeks to come, the pimps. Somebody said, is that Cory Booker? The prostitutes? Somebody asked me, is that the council? And plastic people? We're going to, in the weeks and days to come, we're going to name the pimps, the prostitutes, the plastic people. This council and this administration has lost the moral right and the authority to govern the people of Newark. And tonight, I am here to expose, not only tonight, but in the weeks to come, the corruption, and there's plenty of corruption in this town. That's why the FBI is making this rounds through City Hall now. And injustices of a moral bankruptcy of the pimps, prostitutes, and plastic people that inhabit and visit daily the whorehouse on Broad Street. The whorehouse on Broad Street. Tonight, we are going to expose the ugly and unlawful ways in which the Newark Municipal Council, the mayor, and the city clerk, one of the plastic people, conduct the business of the people of Newark. When is it right?
Thank you, Mr. Hertz.
Or is it ever the right for members of the council to give your tax dollars to their friends or individuals?
Thank you, Mr. Hertz.
Without requiring?
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Your time has expired.
You didn't give me two bells, the first bell? That's not three minutes, Ken? I mean, what are you folks doing? You don't like the hell around the site?
It's three minutes, Mr. Hertz.
Don't steal our time from me?
Mr. Hertz, there were the two bells.
Did you hear the first bell? I'm going to finish up, Ken.
Please take your seat, Mr. Hertz.
Mr. Hertz, your time has expired. We have a number of people who wish to speak as well. I'm sure that if you were in their position, you would want someone.
You know what? This happens every time. You say start at 6:30. You didn't start to 7:00. And yet you can't give me a lousy two minutes to make my point?
Mr. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Ken, you're one of the plastic people, you know?
Wonderful.
Well, that's not wonderful. Well, I get through all you folks corrupt. Somebody's going to jail. Somebody's going to jail!
Thank you, Mr. Hertz.
Yeah, yeah, somebody's going to jail.
Good evening to the Municipal Council. My name is William Elmore. I live in the West Ward, Tuxedo Parkway, Newark, New Jersey. I'd like to start by saying, you know, I received word here today that y'all are going to be voting very shortly on some legislation that is long in coming. But I think the thing that is most important is the fact that we recognize one of our own, Major James, for his achievements and him being able to come before us again. Like I said before, we've been doing a few things here for the disabled and the elderly, but it's not enough. People have been going on too long for things that should have been given to them a long time ago and recognized. And it's very important to know, and I think you all are not aware of the fact, that you all have been in for two years. And we still, they're still working on a Veterans Commission. That we're two years, I mean, two years into this, but we don't have a commission yet. That doesn't sit well. And we have quite a few other pieces of legislation that should be coming for the disabled. We've got a lot of soldiers coming back here and they're already going to be disappointed in the fact that they're disabled, but not have to deal with the fact that they can't go into the stores or into their municipal buildings, the fire department, the police department, City Hall, the courts are not wheelchair accessible. We're in the aisleways. They're not accessible at all for us. And I think they need to do a real planned assessment on these buildings and stop working on it a couple of years from now. This should be assessed now. It should have been done yesterday. But as we stand now, we're still moving entirely too slow. And I think that this council could do a lot more than they're doing now to go ahead and make this a reality. Because we all are going to get old and unfortunately, some of us are going to become disabled. And you're going to come to the realization that this is a true fact. I went out with Councilman Quintana last week and we rode the trains and found that a number of the stops in the North Ward, we couldn't get off of. And there are a lot of high-rise buildings in the North Ward that they surely and undoubtedly have people who are disabled and they won't be able to go to their home. They have to go way out of their way and they probably have to catch a cab or if a bus will stop to get them home. And this is truly unacceptable. I think each of the councilmen need to take a look at this, ride the buses, ride some of the trains, and see if they are accessible for the disabled. A few of these lights, like we showed Councilman Rice and Councilman Payne, that the lights are not friendly for the disabled and cause speed right through them. Well, that's a quick three minutes, but you get to just my point. And I hope that we will continue our efforts and maybe double our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll just go on the motions, I guess. But if we can get a copy to Mr. Elmore, Bob Dwellie's shop regarding the plan for the city to update and upgrade all municipal properties to make them ADA compliant. I know we've had discussions, Mr. Elmore and myself, with his office to get a verbal update. But I'd like to request that that be placed in writing and given to him because we do have some timelines and some target dates that he's given us verbally. But at least something that we can give to the folks in the city who are mostly directly affected by not having access to that thing in writing. So I would just like to request that in motions going forward. And secondly, just to add that we're still waiting on that legislation too, Mr. Elmore. So you keep being diligent with us and we'll be diligent making sure it gets done. I hope that a number of the things that we talked about will be brought before the council before September. That's the timeframe I'm looking at. And so I'm going to do my best to hold folks' feet to the fire and make sure that timeline is adhered to as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. So noted.
Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. Councilman Amador.
Also, also, under motions, I will recommend or suggest that a letter should be sent to the owners of Carlton Hotel to make it handicap accessible. It's not right now. It's a situation that needs to be resolved.
Thank you. So noted. Mr. Clerk, next. I'm sorry.
Esther Williams.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Maureen Robinson.
Mr. Clerk, next speaker.
I'm sorry. Maureen Robinson. Maureen Robinson. Not appearing.
Not appearing, Mr. Clerk.
Esther Williams.
Not appearing.
Just give me a chance. Not appearing, Mr. Clerk.
Omar Hudson.
Good evening, Newark Council, President and Vice President of the Council. My name is Omar Hudson. I live at 83 Stanley Avenue.
Could you just get into it just a little?
My name is Omar Hudson. I live at 83 Stanley Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. Two years ago, 2006, I was a police aide for the City of Newark, worked for the Police Department. For three years, I worked diligently to make my position for, for me to make way, to make way to the Police Department. But once, much too.
Mr. Hudson.
Pause this time.
Just a minute. Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Just hold it a minute. We have a distraction. We'd like to hear what you have to say. Pam, would you start the timer from the beginning, please?
Absolutely.
So that he'll have his full.
Madam President, I think the distractions result from the fact that there's a camera crew here that without permission from the council, decided to come in and film the council. I think this is an insult to the council. They should have at least made us aware that there was a camera crew here to do this, this type of work. I don't know where they come from. I don't know who they are. But I think that we should have been informed beforehand that this was going to take place.
Mr., excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, do you know who they are?
Yes.
Point of order. You know, you can make your own laws. Why do you go by law?
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hertz, please take your seat.
Point of order.
No.
Robert Reed's order.
No.
Mr. Clerk.
Disrupt them like you start everything else.
Point of order refused.
Shh, shh, shh.
Please.
I hope that scream on the record.
It is.
It's a order being refused.
Mr. Clerk, do you know?
Mr. Hertz, please take this.
It's security.
Are you careful?
Yes, we can. And yes, we will. We will not distract this meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to hear. Mr. Clerk, who are these people and why are they?
Madam President, we have asked the camera people to leave. They have agreed to do so. They will, they will be in contact with us about. about the possibility of filming for the July meeting. The issue is resolved.
Okay. Mr. Hudson, please proceed.
Let's start Mr. Hudson's time from the beginning.
My name is Omar Hudson. I live at 83 Shantley Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, South Ward. I was a police aide starting from 2003 to 2006. For some odd reason, I was removed from my position. Me as a person, I came to work every day and I did everything I was told to do as a human being to possess my job in the Newark Police Department. For two years diligently, I've been trying to get my job back. I've been coming down to the council office every day to speak with Mr. Oscar James and whoever will hear my story. Please, I support you guys in whatever you do in the city. Now, all I'm doing now, ma'am, sir, is asking for support. When I lost my job in 2006, I lost hard times. I was homeless. I'm almost one step from being homeless now. So I'm putting myself on the mercy of the council. Can you please help me get my job back as a police aide in the city of Newark, please?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry. Councilman James.
One, I'd like to speak because Omar told the story very accurate. For the last two years, we've been working to get his job back. And I actually encouraged him to come speak tonight because it really reached the point where I'm asking all my colleagues to help me. It wasn't a se... When I looked into the situation two years ago, I was told that his record was exemplary, that there was no problem, that they had no problem bringing him back. So I don't understand why, two years later. And we've tried other jobs. We've tried several different other jobs. He's done it. And I've visited him those nights he slept in that van. So it was very personal to me. It's very personal to me. And I just met him. It's not like Omar's a friend of mine. Omar's somebody I met coming into this office. And like I said, I encouraged him to speak tonight because I'm at a point where I don't wanna see him back homeless again. And I'm asking all of us to get behind me. And you can check his lieutenant. Everybody has said his work is exemplary, that he should come back. They had no problem with him coming back. I just don't know where his paperwork is. We keep filling it out, and we keep getting nowhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And Councilman, you will have our support. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, everybody. Colleen Fields, 24 Park Street, Newark, New Jersey. First, I would like to give honor to our presidents and all the city council people and Honorable Cory Booker in his absence. And my title tonight is "I Don't Like It." I don't like it when the black citizens of Newark, New Jersey, put down the father of Newark, New Jersey, the honorable and gracious Mayor Cory Booker. I know that he is young and inexperienced. So was Sharp James, the honorable ex-mayor when he first took over. My God, give him a chance.
Please continue.
This is the very first -- this is his very first term. Rome wasn't built in a day. I'm sure it took more than a couple of years to master. Mayor Cory can't possibly come in from a past administration, and it's okay. He has to find his way. And people should understand that. Of course, he's gonna make mistakes. We all do. He without sin cast the first stone. And a lot of us are living in glass houses that's doing all this racket and stuff. But anyway, I don't like what I witnessed this morning around 8:37 a.m. at Penn Station here in Newark. Sergeant Mooney Badge, number 211, kicked the foot of a homeless man that had nodded off to sleep and put him out very disrespectfully. I confronted the New Jersey Transit cop. I said, "Is that protocol?" He replied, "Yes." I replied, "I saw you kick this man," shouting at him and disgracing him. Of course, he denied the matter. And I had already been told that they treat the homeless really, really bad. They even locked up Ms. Williams, as old as she was down there. But anyway, it's unacceptable. And I don't know who he thinks he is that he can do that to somebody. Because if you mistreat a dog or kill a dog, you will go to jail. So how can you do this to a human being? It's totally unacceptable. Okay? I don't like it, and this is to you. I don't like it that McCarthy invented this so-called wandering law to harass black and Hispanic men and women in certain neighborhoods. I challenged the police review board to start an investigation as soon as possible. I don't like the fact that police stop and search cars without a warrant. Black people, please don't volunteer to let these cops search your cars. They can plant drugs and arms in your cars. It's just a simple case of KKK movement undercover, simply another form of racial profiling. I don't like the fact that McCarthy was hired from another state. And you have officers here like him that's worked in blood, sweat, and tears and right here from New Jersey. And you mean to tell me that you have to go outside another state to get a man? That's an insult to the police that put their lives on the line every day and serve here. I think that's totally acceptable. Unacceptable. Pray my strength in the Lord.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Ishmael Miller.
He's not here.
Not appearing. Next speaker.
Khalil Robinson. He's here.
Good evening. I have these for the council. Good evening. My name is Khalil Gary Robinson, and I live in the West Ward. I'm a member of the first graduating class of the Urban Environmental Institute. The Urban Environmental Institute is a community-based institution created to educate and activate this community to get involved with issues dealing with environmental justice. Using the seventeen environmental justice principles that my colleagues will later speak about to direct our goals, we became the next generation of urban environmental advocates through leadership training, focusing on developing productive canvassing techniques, media communication, and grassroots organizational skills, as well as sharing and gaining knowledge of environmental and public health problems and possible solutions. During our training process, we were taken to the Ironbound area and observed firsthand the living conditions the members of that area, my community, have attempted to succeed in. Homes surrounded by industrial port containers and covered with mold, covered with such a horrible smell that has been there so long that one resident even told me it was normal. The true horror is that there's at least one person in our community that believes the only thing wrong with that air is its smell. The truth is that in New Jersey, its largest city, a city composed of over 300 different types of businesses, seven major banks, and 11 Savings and Loan Association headquarters, a port that moved over $100 billion in goods last year, some of our children are living in areas that resemble third-world countries. Residents live in waste and pollution of others, below standard air quality, and inability to see anything wrong with that. Learning about sustainability in our environment is like learning to read. It's irreversible. And once you've learned that skill, you can't help but to understand the signs. Problems seem unrelated soon begin to show strings of attachment. For instance, over 86,000 students in Newark's public school systems, 10% of which children age 16 to 19, have either dropped out or are not currently attending school. One of the top reasons children drop out of school is because they fall behind, they cannot catch up. Yet one out of four of our urban schoolchildren is likely to have asthma. Asthma has become the number-one reason for school absenteeism in our nation. This holistic look at our problems will only be possible through education and critical thinking. If we are to make Newark a city filled with hope and dreams again, we must become a team that cares for one another. A team of good neighbors will make our city a great neighborhood.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Heather Kohler. I'm a resident and business owner of the South Ward.
Which is the address, please?
Address is 229 Renner Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm a resident and business owner of the South Ward, and I am a member as well as the first graduating class of the Urban Environmental Institute. As we are all aware here, city council cannot address Newark's environmental crises alone. So I am both surprised and appalled that City Hall does not have an Office of Environmental Affairs to address its overwhelming environmental crisis. We understand that someone is being hired as an advisor, but Newark is in a much deeper crisis, a crisis that calls for seasoned and specialized regulators, negotiators, and administrators. The Office of Environmental Affairs must be funded and staffed. And let's not forget why. We all seem to know that 40% of Newark's youth suffer from asthma, whereas only 10% of suburban kids have asthma. That means nearly half of all our children can't breathe easily. Newark has countless contaminated lots of land, and the ports and the airport destroy our quality of life. And there are none to few reversers. As a live member of Newark's community activists, I know for a fact that Newark aims to become the nation's leading city in safety, economy, and quality of life. But how can this possibly be achieved when we live and work in one of the most polluted cities in America? We all know that there's a green movement sweeping the rest of society, and Newark must take its place in this movement. The city needs an Office of Environmental Affairs, and it needs it now to officiate the crisis on behalf of its citizens and create a greener and healthier city. And it can be done. Leading cities like Chicago and Los Angeles are making great strides in the green movement. Even small towns like Chester, Pennsylvania, are fighting big pollution and winning. And guess what? The city does not have to face this crisis alone. People are here today. People like myself and my colleagues are everywhere. The Office of the mayor's responsibility is to establish an Office of Environmental Affairs that will police and protect Newark against big pollution. And it needs to do so from a position of city government. And this is not just a speech. Every minute of every day, Newark's health is suffering. And if we don't save our own health, what type of quality of life are we really moving towards? The Urban Environmental Institute is here to educate, to advocate, and we are here to stay. Newarkers will know why they can't breathe. They will know why the air is always stinking. And they will want to know what City Hall is doing about it. Do what must be done now and hire an environmental affairs team to help Newark do what must be done if it really wants to become a first-class urban mecca. Try to save lives every day by fighting street and individual crimes.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. Your time has expired.
Councilman Amador.
Before the next speaker comes up to talk about this subject, I think that I, more than anybody else in this council, sees every day the impact of how we hurt the environment. If you drive around, like I did this morning, around the Ironbound, and in the span of about 10 minutes, you can find disasters about to happen. And by luck or by accident, I found an employee of the city taking pictures, I hope was by obligation, taking pictures of a site that is absolutely incredible in the 21st century in the city. I was -- at that time, I was driving from a place called the American Rendering Company that was closed down by the state and by the city by a joint effort made by the state and the city. It was finally closed down after a struggle of about five or six years because of the fact that they released an odor into the city from time to time, and the residents, not only of that area but also the city of Newark, had to endure that type of odor. Finally, we close it down. But guess what? Closing it down was easy. What's hard now is to go back and do the type of work that we need to do for a catastrophe not to happen with what's in there. I invite all the members of the council to go by there and take a look for yourselves about what is in that place. You'll be extremely, extremely surprised that something like this exists in the city of Newark. And this is only one small example of what we have out there. My second, and this is a question, and it's something that we, as a body, should pursue. Whatever happened to the Environmental Commission? That's actually my question. Somebody asked me for a couple of names to be submitted. We had a couple of people that I submitted to the administration that have been involved in this issue for quite a long time, and we haven't heard any more from the administration about the Environmental Commission. So I think it's incumbent upon us to ask somebody from the administration to come before us at the next special meeting and find out the reasons why this commission is not active in an area that is so important to the city of Newark.
For the record, I have approached the mayor on two separate occasions. And I have your names, and I have the names of others who are willing to volunteer. And unfortunately, no movement has been made. But let me go back a moment to Ms. Kohler's comments. They were excellent, and they were solution-driven. If they are tight, would you please give them to the city clerk? I would like to see them forwarded to the Office of the mayor because that's where the authority to hire the person who will become and who will address issues that are related to environmental justice. And so hopefully, we will have an answer for some of you fairly soon now that you are coming before us.
Madam President, just one more thought. I have before me about six or seven added starters dealing with contracts for attorneys, and they legitimately deserve to be voted. But I'm voting no to send a message that unless we fulfill the promise that we made in terms of developing and creating an environmental commission, I'm not gonna vote for this tonight.
All right. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Sonny William Gaddy, Jr.
Not appearing, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Linton, state your name and address for the record, and then proceed.
My name is Terrence Linton. I live at 26 Telford Street, West West Section of Newark.
Speaking to the microphone, Terrence.
I live at 26 Telford Street.
That's better.
In the West West Section of Newark. To further expound on what Heather was saying, the asthma rate in Newark is on the rise. The fact that one to four children suffer from asthma is completely absurd, especially since the state average is only 1 to 10. One of the major factors of this is the diesel emissions that are emitted from the trains, boats, and trucks that enter and exit the city's port. And yes, we do have a clean air rack, and yes, we do have no idling laws, And yes, we do have a clean air act, and yes, we do have no idling laws, but they are not being enforced. These vehicles should be retrofitted, and the lack of an Office of Environmental Affairs compounds this issue. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Adrian Kennard.
Where is he? Mr. Chellman, please don't shout out. Next speaker.
Good evening, esteemed councilpersons, community activists, organizations, Newark residents, and all media press representatives. My name is Adrian Kennard, and I'm a resident of the North Ward.
Just state your exact address, please.
Oh, yes. 324 and a half Broadway, second floor. I'm also a UEI graduate and an advocate for child abuse victims. As an advocate for children and violent crimes, I can attest to the fact that children are one of the most vulnerable groups of people when it comes to traumatic events. No one chooses to be a crime victim, and when they are, his or her voice can be stunted by the perpetrator if not spoken for. In this situation, the crime of becoming a victim due to environmental hazards is not only a crime against our children, but also against us as adults. We have the power to create change and not become victimized by environmental hazards. We must not become our own worst enemy. We must have an Office of Environmental Affairs that will allow Newark constituents to be proactive in the green movement. We must hold public and private entities accountable for not adhering to our demands to change their life-threatening policies when it comes to energy conservation and toxic contamination of our communities that leads to alarming rates of cancer, asthma, and other respiratory illnesses, which one in four Newark children suffer from every day and account for twelve percent of New Jersey's state's managed healthcare costs. My reason for being a part of UEI is because I want to be an advocate for this change. That change will affect my eight-year-old niece, who is that one in four? She suffers from asthma, and when I have to hear her use that machine that she hooks herself up to, it's like a nightmare. In one marking period, she missed twenty-two days of school due to her asthma attacks and emergency room visits. My niece is precious to me, just as I am sure everyone in this room knows of or is the caretaker of a child and can relate to my standpoint. The bottom line is that the overall health and well-being of all Newark constituents is at stake. We must take charge and act now. Don't be a victim, be a victor.
Thank you, Ms. Kennard. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Rashida Miles. Madam President.
Councilman Amador.
I think it's appropriate, after the comments made by the speaker, she mentioned children and cancer. I think it's appropriate for the public to know that as a result of a public meeting that Councilman Rice, myself, Councilman Ramos, and Councilman Payne had on Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, Monday, with the Newark Public Schools and some members of a company, I think it was Verizon, if I'm not mistaken, I hope, Metro, Metro, who were attempting to install cellphone antennas on top of schools. Wilson Avenue School, M Street School, Speedway Avenue.
Mount Vernon.
And Mount Vernon, and Abington Avenue. Because of the public outcry on that night, that proposal is being withdrawn, from what I understand, and antennas will not go on top of the school, of those schools.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Miles?
Not appearing.
Not appearing.
Stephanie White Stroud.
Good evening, council, and good evening, citizens of Newark. My name is Stephanie White Stroud. I can be reached at 70 Montgomery Street. I am a school social worker at the Samuel Blinner School, and I'd just like to press upon the green jobs movement. I joined Urban Environmental Institute because I believe that the Urban Environmental Institute shares my belief that our most precious source of environmental energy is our youth, the future workforce. It is imperative that a green workforce is stimulated at this time, because Newark is at 5.2, I believe, the unemployment rate, which is near the 5.4 of the national average. And every year in my eight years at the Newark Public Schools, I've lost a student every year. And I believe in getting in education and getting resources, not grabbing a handgun. And at this point, I work with our most vulnerable citizens that live at 150% below the poverty line. And with that, I have some solutions where I believe our city can stimulate more green jobs, modeling cities like Oakland, California. At this point, a global green curriculum can be developed in correlation with our Career to Works programs. We can also do, create a Newark Echo Construction Program using some of the community block development funds that we currently use for our urban enterprise zone. We also can use some of our manufacturing energy to create biodegradable materials. When we look at some of our other cities throughout the nation, like Philadelphia, and I think I can quote Mr. Ramsey, the former police commissioner in Philly, and I think he said something like, "I've never arrested a kid who had the resources or a job, and that's where we should sit with our green employment initiative in renewing the hope for our youth and our families and our future." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Jeanette Mitchell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Mitchell. I live at 229 Renner Ave in Newark, New Jersey. I'm a business owner, a community activist, a community activist, yes, and I am a premier graduate of the Urban Environmental Institute. In the last few weeks, my colleagues and I have spent countless hours researching and brainstorming solutions to address the environmental problems that we face in Newark, New Jersey. In addition to the messages delivered by my fellow teammates, I am here to represent environmental justice advocacy and solutions for green mobility in our communities. Information can save lives. Today, information is everywhere, and in many instances, at the same time, it is nowhere at all. Our citizens demand viable and usable, relevant information to move Newark forward. Today, I introduce a plan to you and a plan to work with you to develop a Green On The Go program. The Green On The Go program will consist of a green mobile that will be equipped with usable and pertinent current information relating to going green, what is it, and what can I do? Energy conservation from homes to work to school to play, everyday life. Green jobs, the availability and training information, including retrofitting, chemical and soil testing, and LEED certification. Interactive information for children and other green information. The green movement is here, and our city must address it. How long will our schools be built on contaminated sites? How long will our city's air be polluted and public housing be contaminated? The Green On The Go program will visit schools, civic centers, and inner-city communities to inform and encourage our citizens about the environment and how to take care of it. This program, by its mobility, will also be a visible, consistent, and constant vehicle in Newark and may empower other cities to do the same by informing its citizens. My councilmembers, you have the responsibility to inform and encourage the citizens of Newark and to empower them by giving them viable, cutting-edge, and relevant information. Our cities and I, and everyone in this room, must be empowered, as we have empowered you. I will take responsibility to move forward, and I ask, and our citizens ask as well, for you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. And just to comment quickly on your issues and the manner in which you report, I have a cold, please forgive me. Our public relations consultant is here, and we are in the process of putting together a council monitor. It might be an opportune time for us to inform the public, as you've suggested, and empower them. So perhaps after the meeting is over, Ms. Kohler, perhaps you could speak to them, and if not, in this issue, in the forthcoming issue. We may want to do something significant. It goes out to all the citizens. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Brenton Osborne.
Not appearing, Mr. Clerk.
Robert Robinson.
I'm sorry, that's Mr. Robinson, yes. Please come around. He's fine right there.
Yes, okay, thank you. A member of the council, my name is Robert Robinson, and I'm the instructor for the Urban Environmental Institute, and I just wanted to very quickly tell you that I think all of these young people deserve a round of applause. They're committed, they're passionate, and they're not just children anymore. And I just want to say in my brief statements, what I encourage you to think about is George Monarch Shaw once said, "Some see things they ask why, I dream of things that they never want to ask why not." Why can't we change Newark? Why can't we get our kids off the streets and get our kids working in green jobs, retrofitting buildings? The police commissioner in Philadelphia, one of us was saying, he said something very profound. He said he never arrested a black child for killing another black child who had a job. Okay? This green job movement is the Bethlehem Steel, the General Motors of the 21st century. The estimate is there are over a hundred million buildings in the United States that need to be retrofitted. This, in Newark area alone, we could be employing about six to eight thousand young people in this green jobs movement, retrofitting buildings. These kids, if we give them opportunities, they will not kill each other. If we give them jobs, it will make a difference in their lives. The problem is adults are not making opportunities for young people. When I was a kid, I grew up in Buffalo, New York, I worked in three different places. I worked in a cleaners, a car wash, I worked in a clothing store. Are there any opportunities for our kids? If we, as adults, don't make opportunities for these young people, then the opportunities are not going to happen. So we have to make this green job movement work. This is the Bethlehem Steel of the 21st century. This is the General Motors. If we don't make this work in retrofitting buildings and making all kinds of opportunities for our young people, nothing is going to happen, and they're going to continue to kill each other. So I implore you to explore ways in which this green job movement can begin to happen. We have the ideas at the UEI, please help us see things as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson Robinson. Sorry. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Kim Thompson Gaddy.
Sit down. My name is Kim Thompson Gaddy. I reside at 11 Sanford Place. I am a West Ward resident. And I too, as our instructor, Mr. Robinson did, I want my children to stand up, and I want to applaud you one more time. Stand up. This is what it's about. When I lobbied in Trenton, and when I started engaging myself in this environmental movement, I was one of three African-Americans who would be down in Trenton talking to legislators, attending council meetings, talking to our urban mayors, and they have a disconnect with our environmental issues. I'm also a parent of three children who are asthmatic, so I understand what Adrian stated. It hurts me to see our children dying of asthma attacks in 2008. It is ridiculous. It also hurts me when you can understand that if we don't engage ourselves in this green movement, we are once again going to miss the opportunity of a lifetime. It is not that difficult to get our youth off the street and engage in apprentice programs. There are unions who want to participate. There are organizations that want to participate. There's $125 million that was allocated in the energy bill. There's a lot of money that's allocated for this movement. We can't afford to miss it this time in the city of Newark. And so this first class, it definitely was a dream of mine, and I have my state director here, Amy Goldsmith, I want to acknowledge, from New Jersey Environmental Federation. We have 100,000 members throughout the state of New Jersey. But we are present here in the city of Newark because it is time that the urban community becomes engaged in this environmental movement. It is my opportunity and my responsibility to pass the baton to the next generation of urban voices. They are qualified, they are able, they are willing, and as you can see, this is a very diverse group, ages 19 to 35, social workers, people working at prosecutors' offices. My son, who is not here, worked for the welfare department. They have jobs, but they're concerned because their future is still at stake. So I hope that you heard the statements that they made, and we engage ourselves seriously to push this administration to establish and appoint those individuals. Because Councilwoman Crump, I want to commend you for putting the resolution for the creation of Environment to Commission, but today, two years later, as some people spoke, it is not, it is not in existence. The Office of Environmental Affairs, New York City has one, a lot of places have one. We need to really commit ourselves, and we can begin to change what is happening in this city. Thank you.
Ms. Kim, Ms. Gaddy, Ms. Gaddy, don't go away, I have a question. Councilman James.
I'm waiting for all the speakers to speak, because this is an issue that's very close and personal to me. I'm one of those children left at one in four. I remember those nights that going to bed and feeling like somebody took their hands around my lungs and would not let it go. I still suffer from asthma. Every day, I deal with asthma. So, and I understand, and from this position, I began to understand better, especially in the Dayton Street area, in the Freeland Eisen Avenue area, how it's negatively affected my children. Recently, at Dayton Street School, we lost a young lady, and on Friday, we will have an asthma awareness ceremony in honor of that young lady to educate the other children in that area about the complications of asthma. We're not highlighting her death, but celebrating her life, and we're going to plant a tree in her name at Dayton Street School for the young lady. And I'm employing any of your group that's available, please join us Friday at Dayton Street School to do that. And we're promoting through the Health Department, Ms. Viscarondo has offered all types of services that we're going to try to wrap around the young people in that area. And during the summer, I'm going to be spending, you know, a lot of my time doing community cleanups and trying to educate on the effects of the environment and asthma. So I ask you, any information, and anytime, we'll open up my schedule, and anytime, and I agree with you, we need the administration to do what they need to do in terms of establishing the commission and the office, but in the meantime, we can hit the streets, and I can help you move forward your mission. And I know several different groups in the South Ward that are interested in continuing and promoting the effects of asthma. So I'm with you.
Ms. Gaddy, two things. Number one, let me commend you for leading the charge for environmental justice in an urban setting. You're absolutely right, it's been a forgotten, on-the-back-burner issue, and while I'm not delighted to hear that Councilman James is an asthma sufferer, it certainly lends credence to what you are talking about and what you're bringing me for as a council. But the question I wanted to ask is, you mentioned that there was $125 million allocated for environmental justice. Were you talking about Newark, the state of New Jersey, or the United States?
The United States, the energy bill and part of that. But the city of Newark received, like California, specific money to be earmarked to training individuals for this green job, Ms. Green Future.
Right, that's the point I wanted to get to. Can you get that information to us, and we'll circulate it to all the council members so that we have information from which we can speak with authority? And I do thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Tenfor Evans.
Good afternoon. My name is Tenfor Evans, 14900 Terry, 555 Elizabeth Avenue, P.O. Box 2367, New Jersey. I have some paper to pass you around here, pass this round to them, please, and also pass these when I get to it. This can be passed around, too. Pass this round, too, okay? First off, I start anything. I'm starting with Cory Booker. And I want my time to be better. Cory Booker wrote this about the city of Newark.
He did not.
Number one, these are why you cannot get none done, because you don't have no leader. Anytime a man, supposed to be the mayor, talk about your city, that means that he is not concerned about this city. Only thing he was concerned when he got in was job change. Look at the book. I pass it around to y'all, I want you to read it. Number one, proceed in here. All of you, council, understand him. It's time for y'all to get on your own ship. It's time for y'all to get on your own ship and get off this man here. I don't know who he is. I don't know who he is. He's supposed to be a mayor. Anytime you own a city, you don't talk about your city and have people come around. When he take time to talk about the city, he should have took time with you, you, you to help you solve the problem for the city of Newark. And I'm going to stop this in the other thing. When the young lady come here and say, "He young, didn't have Charjane." Stop putting Charjane into him. Charjane trained himself. He was 16 years of a council. Charjane, he never wrote no stuff about the city of Newark. No other center wrote nothing about no city of Newark like this him. Now, this is ridiculous him. I don't know who he is. I want him out of Newark.
Ms. Evans, you are to address the chair and the council.
I want you out of Newark. I'm ready to do now. I want you to share. You got your counsel here. You run around, he have a ward. He going to put somebody against you. What kind of counsel that is? What kind of man this is? Please get him out of Newark before I have another heart attack. Thank you. Next thing I have to share. Gonzales. Councilor Gonzales. Number one, this deal have not been proved yet in the first place. Why was this print and put on Gonzales ticket in the first place? We are paying people to do a job and they're not doing the job properly. Here, right here, I got the fact since I was here. He said defer. Defer means that we want to discuss it. We don't put it on the paper and say we got affordable houses for people when we don't have no affordable houses. Look at it. You got a plane, it's simple. And it should have been a Hamadaw, not Gonzales. It says East Ward, you got to put an Hamadaw. No, no, but he don't want to have it on him because he don't, he not doing it. Don't put nothing on his name. I don't want him under his name, excuse him for something and calling there tomorrow, "We got affordable houses." We ain't got no affordable houses. Now, we are paying people for something that we are not getting done in the city of Newark. I'm tired of it. Please, council, get off the board and stop dragging your feet. Get the job done. Number one, another thing.
Your time has expired, Ms. Evans.
Huh?
Your time has expired.
My time is, that's the second bail, Ms. Evans.
Yes.
That's the first bail.
That's the second bail.
Please don't stop me in the middle when I'm talking, council.
Your time has expired.
They did not. That's the first bail.
Second bail.
That was the first bail. I don't want, I'm standing right here.
Second.
Next thing is, that was the first bail.
Ms. Evans.
Next thing is, on the second bail.
Ms. Evans, the second bail.
No, he wasn't second, that was the first bail. No, it wasn't. The shelter, we got to the South Ward.
Ms. Evans, your time has expired.
Please take your seat.
Ms. Evans.
I want to extend this time, but I'm not finished.
You may not extend your time.
Number one is, that we need to help in the South Ward. Okay? We need to help.
Let me up you up. Ms. Evans, Ms. Evans, let me up you up. Let me up you up. Since you can't, I, I, let me finish this, since your time is done, let me finish it. We are, there's already a pre-printed motion for, for New Jersey Transit to look at the bus shelters for Elizabeth and Lyons, but we're going to extend that. And we're saying Elizabeth, the entire Elizabeth Avenue corridor, the entire Lyons Avenue corridor, please, New Jersey Transit, explore the possibilities, not explore, that we need bus shelters in those, people are traveling early in the morning and coming home late at night from New York City that travel the 107 and other bus lines that lead in and around New York. So, is that okay?
Yeah, that's what we want in the South Ward.
Thank you.
And next time, Brother and Crump, you don't stop me till I'm finished.
Ms. Evans, when your time is expired, I will stop.
They won't let you go.
And Mr. Clerk, excuse me. Before we go to the next speaker, I do have to make a correction. The article was not written by Cory Booker, that it appeared in Esquire. It was written about Cory Booker. It was not written by Cory Booker. The byline is by a prominent, well-known journalist. So we want, we want our viewing, we want our viewing audience to be aware of that. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk. She's here, Lisa's here.
It's my turn now, 10-4. Good evening, Lisa Parker, representing University Estates Homeowners Association. I came before the council in February 2008 regarding and to raise concerns about Springfield Avenue redevelopment project with Will Allen, WKA Development Corporation, and the police presence in our community. At the time, I was assured by Councilwoman Roan that the situation would be looked into concerning a hotel that he's proposing to put on Spring, on South Orange Avenue and Prince Street. I was made aware that there's going to be a meeting held on June 26 at the Clubhouse in Society Hill to meet with the developers with their proposal. I say to the council again, we are adamant, we don't want a hotel that could be considered a transient hotel over the long-term period. This was never part of his original proposal and we are against it. At the same time, I raised a concern that whoever owns the property needs to clean the property. From February up to now, the same garbage is still piling up on that street. I've contacted Councilwoman Roan's associate to have him have code enforcement, whoever's responsible for monitoring these sites or the developers to come out and clean it or find the people for not being in compliance. That has not been addressed. The second issue was regarding the police presence, and I'd like to know where are the patrols on 13th and South Orange, Richmond, and Boston Street? When I attended meetings to hear the rhetoric from the police chief and the director talk about where the police are being dispatched, where their priorities are, we didn't have a problem when Cory Booker's family lived in the environment. There was police, horses, everything in the community. Last summer, Cory Booker came and met with the community. The students from the medical school talked about crimes that were being committed against them. People in the community told Cory Booker that crimes were being committed against their families. We had police presence on all shifts during that time, and now they're nonexistent. Our taxes pay for services. We want the patrols back in our environment. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, as Ms. Parker takes her seat, perhaps one of the members of our staff could speak with her. She is absolutely right about the garbage piling. I was over in that area just the other day and I actually had to turn my head in disbelief at, at how disgusting it is. So if someone could, Sylvester, perhaps you, or someone could speak to her and get the exact address so that we can get the lot and block number, determine ownership, and see if we can't do something about it, because it is not, even her words did not describe how disgusting. So thank you, Lisa.
Yes, Madam President.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Donald Jackson.
I saw him.
Donald.
I saw him.
My name is Donald Jackson. Live at 79 Tracy Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, 07108. Before I begin, let's say I have a problem with certain individuals on the council who like to get upset when someone criticizes their work ethic or criticizes something they say or disagrees with something they say or do. Me, as a person of the things that I do, come to say that no matter what you say or what you do, you're always going to have someone that disagrees with you and agrees otherwise. I face that every day, everywhere I'm at, I'll go to Shabazz with staff members, administrators, and others in the city of Newark. Okay? Also, some staff members that work for the city are disrespectful to the citizens and always have smart remarks, are rude, and always have attitudes. We are taxpayers, we deserve better. Next, again, Mr. James. I have yet to see you at Malcolm X Shabazz. Shabazz is a school that is hurting and is waiting to be rescued. No longer can Shabazz wait on empty prom, empty, unfulfilled promises from administrators and elected officials. Council members at large and other council members on this board, it is now time for you to step up and go to not only Shabazz, but almost every height, every, excuse me, every high school in the city of Newark and every school in Newark and see what happens behind closed doors. Again, the summer is, again, the summer is approaching and the lack of employment for the youth is going to lead to a hot, hazy summer. It's going to lead to murders, young youth going to jail, and other things that we do not want in the city of Newark, because we already have enough. Also, for those who think charter schools are a good thing, I would like to tell you all that I've attended a charter school for about seven years of my short, what you would call, educational life, and it was the worst experience I've had. I faced race, racism, and verbal abuse and verbal assault every day. Not saying that some charter schools aren't good, but we don't need a charter school in every corner in the city of Newark. Again, the South Ward, the South Ward is a hor, uh, excuse me, the South Ward, uh, man, excuse me. The South Ward is a ward that is hurting and is waiting to be rescued. The youth need help. I'm tired of coming in front of this council and telling you things that you should already know, since you claim that you being Newark and working Newark all day, every day. Finally, I would like to know why the speaking list has been cut down to 25 people.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, your time has expired.
If you'll see me after the reading, I'll be happy to tell you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Donna Jackson.
Donna Jackson, 128 Smith Street, Newark. Well, once again, another sad evening. We've had another child assaulted at Barringer Prep High School on Broad, on Bluefield Avenue in summer. He is now in a coma in UMDNJ, because your police department doesn't do their job. They had a talent show at Barringer Prep last week. The principal called for police action. Four police cars showed up, they sat in front of the school and did absolutely nothing. The principal asked, the parent liaison asked, the parents asked for those police to walk those kids around so that they can go home. This young child who performed, 14-years-old, was assaulted by a 21-year-old, a 20-year-old, two 19-year-olds, and two 14-year-olds. I don't know what you guys are going to say to the family, but once again, we failed our youth. But tonight, we have something going on at the arena. We got 942 police downtown Newark on Broad Street, Newark 21. We give a darn about these people going into the arena, and yeah, we should. But you need to care about our children, you need to care about the residents coming home from work, we need to care about everybody. Once again, three weeks ago, we had a correction officer assaulted, wallet taken, gun taken, South Orange Avenue and Grove Street, while he was going to work. Nothing been done about that. So now, we robbing police, beating children, who's going to be safe now? None of us. And I think it behooves us now to be concerned about our police deployment and how these things are acting. I was glad to hear so many people from the Green Party tonight, I don't know where they've been for the last two years. We've been up here talking about the demolition of brick towers, we had a worker die at the Western House Building. Would have been nice for them to come out with their little green signs and say something then. Silence gives consent. I'm like for them to be involved, but they need to be all the way involved. I hope you guys are aware that a worker did die on the brick tower site on Monday. Building fell on them because they took too much at the bottom. They are still not putting water on brick towers. There are children in that area with asthma, as young as six months, who are now taking two steroids a day because we have not protected them. $20 million to renovate seven parks, yet we're only hiring 1,500 children for the summer, and we have 16,000 high school students. Why is Newark not recycling plastic? Another source of revenue that could come into the city, other than you taxing us overburdened folks with your endless tickets, fines, and harassment at all hours of the day, night, and evening. Drug is the new employment, and it is now on the rise. We have now let 372 Newark residents go over at the arena, you guys have done absolutely nothing. Today, the folks over there enjoying whatever's going on, but Newark residents are not working. There is a problem going on here when you guys sit back and allow this to happen. As the previous speaker has said to you, you guys need to get on your own ship, you better get on your own ship, and you better stop jumping on these political bandwagons because none of them don't care about Newark. You guys need to care about Newark first and worry about these national, international people later. And lastly, tell Mayor Booker, he need to come home to Newark, stop chasing Mr. Obama because there's no future there for him. As long as I'm a resident and support Mr. Obama, Mr. Booker will not be on that national ticket.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Isaac Jenkins.
Not appearing, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, that concludes the list of speakers for this evening. The next hearing of citizens will take place on Wednesday, July 2, at 12:30 PM, or as soon thereafter as is practical. Onto the regular agenda. Motion to counsel the whole to change the order of business.
I beg your pardon?
Change the order of business, we need to consider two items that need to be done in it before 9 o'clock this evening in order, the one is the bonding orders that needs to be completed before 9 o'clock in order for us to secure the necessary bond rating.
Yes.
Is this somebody in here, videotape? They're gone. No, I mean, is somebody like, who's on the phone telling whether we do that 9 o'clock or not? Oh, the bond council is here, is in the chamber. So as soon as we approve it, he's going to get him, call and tell, tell his office that they can, that they can go ahead with the sale. Roll call on changing the order of business. They're going to sell tonight? They're going to secure the rate tonight? So they're going to lock in the deal?
It's like stocks.
No, I just wanted to, you know, same, I was going to say, who's Jim? Roll call on the change.
Roll call to change the order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Tintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
Preservation 7R5As, ratification authorization for the, to confirm the, and ratify the terms of the purchase contract. Counsel the whole to adopt.
Roll call for adoption, Mr. Clerk.
Endall?
Yes.
Gonzales?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Tintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
Preservation 7R4G is the, on the page 22 is the authorization for the Department of Engineering for a contract for the resurfaces near various streets with Granada Construction Corporation. There is, there's material in your package which explains this situation. Counsel the whole to defer. Why would you, oh, okay.
Roll call to defer.
Why are we changing order of business to defer?
I don't, we were doing, it has to do with the bonding, still, but.
Are we deferring the contract? Yes. The Law Department. Roll call.
You need to let us know about this in advance.
The company that was, that won the bid the first time, was rejected. The second, which is Granada, became the winner, and the first English pavin is contesting the decision made by the Law Department.
You're not happy, are you?
Let him say that, yes.
Mr. Clerk, you can't spring this on us.
Sorry, Madam President. You don't have to be upset. You don't have to be upset.
Yeah, it is. Roll call to defer because that's the request and we'll vote appropriately.
Counsel President, I'm sorry, can we defer until Tuesday and get a clarification? Because we do have a special conference on Tuesday. Councilman, the Law Department is requesting some time in order to go, there is the possibility of litigation on this issue. The Law Department is requesting some time in order to go over the, all of the documents. But my thing is, and just thinking about all the other council colleagues, is that, you know, I got some sheets paid in the South Ward that I've been, that I've been dying for, but it's not fair to hold up the rest of the city just because I've started to get some of my work done. That's all I'm saying.
There's been a recommendation that we defer to the next regular meeting.
for, but it's not fair to hold up the rest of the city just because I've started to get some of my work done. That's all I'm saying.
Um, there's been a recommendation that, um, we defer to the next regular meeting. This will give the Law Department...
One, once a month, yeah.
It'll be the July meeting.
The July, okay.
Um, we will, this will give the Law Department the opportunity to review, uh, the legislation and get back to us with an appropriate decision. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Roll call to defer to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes. You can now leave, Mr. Ferrell.
All right, Jim, he's going to be in the car on the phone. You can sell, you can sell.
Sell, sell. Bye, bye.
He's on the phone.
Bye.
Set the time of nine o'clock for the cannon post reading. Who set the time of nine o'clock for the bonding?
Please, please say this.
That's the finance market time. Oh, you know why? Because California may close three hours behind us. Just joking.
Mr. Clerk, to the agenda, please. That's what happens when you got lots of money.
No. Ordinance is on first reading?
He's not here.
6FA, this ordinance amending Title 23 Traffic Parking, the famous Broad Street and Orange Street.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, um, had I been at the meeting yesterday, I would have made the motion to table. I once again made the run, and unless you know there is a turn at that, at the Lackawanna Station, you don't know. Um, it, it presents, I believe, a, a, a traffic, a hazardous situation, and I, I am not satisfied. So I asked my colleagues, allow me to table, let's table this so we can get a real thorough discussion. And to take the sign down from, uh, Orange Street because it's up there illegally, we are breaking our own law.
Madam President?
See, I mean, New Jersey Transit, you know, was here yesterday. They gave a pretty thorough explanation. And it was a fairly lengthy discussion on the matter, and, and the, um, Engineering Department was directed by the council to put signage, uh, approximately a quarter-mile or a half-mile before that on, um, Broad Street, signage to indicate the jug handle at Bridge Street, uh, which is the jug handle for Orange Street.
Unfortunately, I missed the discussion. Was it, was it that good?
It's pretty, if I can, Madam President, I think Transit made a, a pretty good argument as far as traffic safety issues, and I agree that the city, through the Engineering Department, should have better signage informing people about the turn that's allowed at Lackawanna, but, um, there are good reasons why you can't make a left on Orange Street.
I missed, I missed it. Uh, Mr. Clerk, apparently, the explanation in my absence, um, was sufficient, um, and so, I guess, um, council as a whole to adopt.
And, uh, with the, the council directing, uh, the city clerks, they have to write a specific letter to Engineering reiterating the necessity for signage on, uh, Broad Street and asking for a report about how that will be accomplished.
Roll call.
Amador?
It's, uh, it's the Broad Street, the left turn onto Orange Street.
Recognizing what?
Well, apparently, I missed the meeting yesterday, and, and I understand that DOT came in and gave a very good explanation.
I'm voting yes.
Come on, continue.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
No.
Six FB, uh, Title 5 Amusements, excuse me, this is the, uh, ordinance regulating and licensing social clubs, which has been discussed on several occasions with the council and the administration. What's the council's pleasure?
Do we ever get the revisions that the attorney stated that they would put on regarding the temporary CO?
No. So we should defer.
This is the, the way the ordinance was as of yesterday's conference.
There was a commitment at yesterday's meeting that there would be some change in language. If, if we move this, does, does it prevent us from making changes?
Well, it'll, it'll, i- if you want those amendments first, then I would suggest you defer it this evening.
All right, let's defer it, Madam President.
Yes.
Our council will hold to defer 6FB.
We have a mover and a seconder. We have a mover and a seconder.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ramos?
And Quintana.
Uh, Quintana, thank you.
Okay. Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
6FD, Madam President, requires milling and repaving a street for certain development projects by ordinance, Title 38 Land Subdivision, discussed, uh, previously with the Department of Engineering. Council the whole to adopt on first reading.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
6FB, Madam President, requires milling and repaving a street for certain development projects by ordinance, Title 38 Land Subdivision, discussed, uh, previously with the Department of Engineering. Council the whole to adopt.
On first reading, yes. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
Madam President?
Uh, Councilman...
Just very quickly, just for the viewing audience, I don't see Mr. Elmore here, but he asked what was the status of the Veterans Office, and I just want to let him know that this is, uh, the viewing, uh, the viewing public, that this is, uh, we're voting on today, is actually establishing, uh, office space, uh, for the nonprofit Corporation for Veteran Services, uh, for the city of Newark. So just, things that he's asked before, we're moving on, and we actually are, this is the legislation actually establishing what he said we need to establish.
Thank you. Madam President? I'm sorry, Councilman Amador.
Can we go back to 6FC 4?
C 4.
And...
CB 4.
Which is granting a tax abatement to 56 Delancey Street. The CO was given on June 1st, '06, and the deed, 81685.
Mr. Clerk, is that a typo?
No, it means that the, the individual purchased the land some time ago, but they just recently built the structure.
I, I know what it's supposed to, you know, reflect. I, I understand, Mr. Clerk, but I was asking...
We'll, we'll have Calixto look, look at it. If there's a problem, Cal, would you get back to us, we'll come back to that item? All right, Councilman?
I think he's found it.
They can ask, clerk.
Cal, did Cal hear me?
C 4.
Okay.
We can be on here.
Where are we? 6FF. What was the last roll call you took? All right, you took the roll call on E, right? 6FF?
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, this is exclusive bus lanes along Raymond Boulevard.
Um, any...
Counsel have questions or concerns about this?
If not, council's hold to adopt on first reading.
Thank you. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The ordinance is adopted on first reading today, Madam President. It will be advertised in accordance with law, a public hearing will be held at the regular council meeting of July 2nd, 2008, 12:30 PM, sooner thereafter as possible, in this council chamber. Ordinance is on public hearing, second reading and final passage. 6PH, SNFA, by ordinance cancels five years of residential abatements, failure to execute the necessary documentation. Does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing, Mr. Clerk.
No one appearing, a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance, second reading, final passage, council the whole.
Roll call, please.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
6PH, SNFB, ordinance denying five-year residential abatements, failure to submit required documents. Does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing, Mr. Clerk.
No one appearing, a motion to close the hearing, adopt the ordinance, second reading.
Madam President, before we vote, I'd like to, uh, for the council to take a look. I specifically deferred, asked to defer this the last meeting because of these three properties at Freeman, Freeman Street that seemed kind of odd, that the three of them together were, were denied, and tried to, to find out the reason why. They were denied because of negligence on the part of the, the attorney not to submit one specific small document, uh, proof, one additional proof of residency from the, from the, these folks who bought these properties. Uh, this is a matter that we have talked about, and, and, and the time that it, that is in question here, to, to justify the denial and giving a tax abatement to these people is just a matter of three or four days. This is a matter that we should consider with, with, with the Tax Abatement Committee because...
God bless you, defer.
So defer when we turn?
Yes.
Defer again till we get it right?
Uh, council's hold to defer to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
We had a meeting, but, uh, the whole committee was not attended, so for that reason, we should just defer and to the committee, we, we meet again.
You want to defer those three or not, not just the...
The whole package.
Because it's hard to separate those two.
I, I, I think the reason why I asked, I, I apologize, Madam President, but the reason why I asked to, to, to single out these three is to, for us to, and I asked this before, by the way, to have a reason why these are denied, because if you look at, in most cases, the reason why these are denied, it's just a matter of days before the information that is requested is submitted to us, and it's not the fault of the people who bought those properties, it's the fault of the attorney in most cases that is negligent in providing the information to us, and we should consider this as, as a way of resolving some of these questions.
Excellent point. Uh, roll call to defer, Mr. Clerk.
6PH, SNFB, council to hold to defer. The public hearing has been closed.
Uh, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Rowan absent, President Crump?
Yes.
6PH, SNFC 1 through C10 is the granting of residential abatements. Does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
Uh, just a question on, uh, SC 8, the tax abatement. Um, once again, the purchase price 64,000, silo payment 3,000. This person is paying as much tax on that property as the person in number six who paid $620,000 for the house. I understand that you explain to me every month that the architect cert price is what drives the silo price, but somewhere in here, this is crazy because there's no way we can justify, to me, if I was purchasing it, that I'm paying $3,000 for my home on Fabian Place, the same amount of price that the person who lives on Farley Avenue who pays $620,000 is only paying $400 more a year. Um, you truly have to look at this process with tax abatement and, and give it a final review. I don't think you guys should grant anymore, deny anymore, do anything, um, and, and, you know, in reference to just what Councilman Amador said, I think if people can't provide proof of residency, whether it's the attorney's fault or not, they shouldn't have it because they probably don't live here. That's probably why the proof of residency isn't here. We got so many people, and I'm not saying that these three people are, or the, the people on the list, but we got so many people shim-sham in the system that we are not putting the brakes on at all to check and find out, do these people still legitimately live here? I can say that I live at 478 Farley Avenue right now. I could just go there, get a letter sent there from down here at one of your offices or just mail something to myself and come and say that I live there. What are we putting in place? We need to begin to really review what's going on here with this tax abatement process, what's going on with these purchase price, and who these architects really are, same four people every time, um, that are giving these architect certs at the same price, and then these people are paying 18 times what the, um, architect cert price is. We, we are in a recession in this country, whether President Bush will admit it or not, I think this council knows we're having some financial difficulty, and I think it behooves us right now to seriously look at what we're doing with tax abatements to make sure that it's also fair to the new homeowner, so that when this $600,000, particularly this person in, uh, FC 6, when their purchase price of $600,000 and that silo payment leaves them in five years and their taxes now go to 12,000 to 15,000 a year, who's going to be there to catch them? Thank you.
Anyone else?
In a very brief... My name is Tenfor Evan, 14900 Interior, 555 Elizabeth Avenue, P.O. Box 2367. I ask again, and I ask one more time, I would likes to have the new law of tax rebate, that y'all do have a new form of tax rebate, I would likes to have it, before we go in and furthermore about these tax rebate again. I come up here once, and you do have a new one, and I ask you again and over and over, I would like to see that. I have a right to have that in my hand, before we talk about tax, then we know what we talking about. Okay? Please have it in my hand, for the night out, no longer tomorrow, when I will be on again. Please.
Ms. Evans, I would love to say we could have it in your hand before the night is over. Calixto is very capable, and he'll see that you get it tomorrow, if you don't mind, Calixto.
Ms. Evans, him right there.
Councilman Amador?
That guy right there, hold him responsible.
Raise, raise your hand. Raise your hand, Clerk.
So you know who to look for, Ms. Evans?
If I don't have it, believe me, brother and sister, I will be calling them back.
You will be calling us back, I'm sure. Councilman Amador.
Well, just, just for public information, the laws, the tax abatement laws for residential units were not, in, in cases like this, two-family and three-family units have not been changed since they were created. The only changes that took place were for condos and for commercial units. That's all that took place. There's been no change in as far as this law is concerned, since it was created.
Let's just give her that.
We'll give her that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hertz.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we heard you.
My name is Frank Hertz, I live at Fort Rumon Prospect Avenue. In regards to the tax abatement that's given to C ten, page six, C ten, page six, question number one, is this a one-unit house, or is it a condominium?
It's a one-unit.
It says one unit.
Thank you. Now, the next question is, why would it cost a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars to build a one-unit home? The architect is in Glaces, and the same architect builds a two-family unit for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars? Can somebody give me an explanation of that?
Anybody want to take a shot?
No, you're pretty smart. Don't underestimate yourself, you're pretty smart, but I, I really like a, a, an explanation. Oh, God. Oh, God. No explanation?
We'll get back to you with an answer.
Who's going to get back to me?
He's saying that it's a one-unit home.
No, we understand. Yeah, I think- We'll get back to you with an answer, what's today, Wednesday by Friday.
But who's going to get back to me?
Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Calixto.
Mr. Clerk.
Calixto.
Mr. Clerk.
Let's throw him under the bus again.
Mr. Calixto, you, you have another assignment. Please make available to Mr. Hertz, a legitimate question, too, that he just raised, regarding ten, and what was the other?
Number ten.
Number ten and number eight. And number eight.
Is that ten and nine, ten and eight?
Okay.
Give us until Friday.
All right, I'll be, see you, Robert, to get that.
Yes, sir.
The-
Yeah, could be.
Also like to know-
An architect's in a different part of town.
Why we don't, why doesn't a city have its own architect to certify the certification of the architects that are doing it? And I raise this point solely because, at one time, the same architect certified a two-family unit for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. The same architect, the building was sold, and he gave a break, a breakdown, which I, I never see. He gives demolition, the, the, for the footing and everything else, you know? The same architect gave a breakdown for a house that had previously received a tax abatement, but charged two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars to rehabilitate, to restore the house that he constructed for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. So that's why I'm asking that this council, we have lots of money, get a consultant, an architect, go over the stuff, because there's something wrong here. I, I got, I got, I gotta tell you, that every house that's built, it's whether it's a one-family, two-family, or three-family, it only costs a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, regardless of what the footage is, you know? So what, what, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is, Brother Robert, get that building, throw it out of here. What, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, that I know the reason, and you know the reason. It's done solely to beat the tax abatement. We pick up the tab, so every time there's a house built for a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, the tax abatement is only thirty-four-hundred dollars, because there's only two percent of the construction cost. So I'm asking you really to look into this, because we got some serious problems.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Mr. Clerk, on, on motion, would you, your office draft a letter to the administration asking the question, why do we not have an architect that certifies, who works for the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's the response going to come back to?
Excuse me?
Who gets the response? How's it? No, I said, who gets the response on that letter? Because I think Mr. Hertz should be CC'd on that.
Oh, yes, Mr. Clerk will be CC'd on the letter. Mr. Hertz will CC you on the letter. Certainly.
CC you.
Oh, yeah. Please don't.
CC you.
No, we'll be happy to CC you. Uh, next item, Mr. Clerk.
CC you. So counsel to hold to-
To adopt.
To adopt. Close the hearing, and no one else appearing? Close the hearing and adopt the ordinance on second reading, final passage.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Santana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Ron absent, President Trump.
Yes.
Six P H S N F D, Vassar and Van Belser as a stop intersection, does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing, Mr. Clerk.
No one appearing, a motion to close the hearing and adopting the ordinance, second reading, final passage, council to hold.
Roll call, please.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Santana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Ron absent, President Trump.
Yes.
Six P H S N F E, bond ordinance, this various sewer utility capital improvements, discuss with the city's bond council. Does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
Donna Jackson, one-twenty-eighth Smith Street. First question, will DJ still be paying for this when he's my age? Well, you're fifteen now, DJ? I'm forty-plus. In thirty years, will DJ still be paying for this eight million dollars? And how much of this capital improvement will we be doing as a city, and how much will we be contracting out? And with the eight million dollar improvement, this is, okay, sewer utility, does any of this go to Passaic Valley? I'm sure it doesn't, but I'm sure it's our infra-
No.
Okay, that's good.
We can enter.
And then lastly, will we be hiring any extra folks so that we can do this capital improvement, or are we going to outsource the whole thing?
Councilman James.
Okay, so first, in terms of capital sewer, water, water utility improvements to the city, the unfortunate answer is yes, from, not for this eight million dollars, but for ongoing improvements, and we will probably be making capital improvements to our city and water utilities for the next ten to fifteen years, just to make sure that we don't suffer any major issues. Right now in the South Ward, I have backups and peoples, people who live on the corner in their basements at times, and they're saying, you know, why is this happening? Because we haven't made systematic improvements to our water sewer. So as we go into the ground, I can't say specifically where this eight million is targeted, but we have, I think, a twenty-year plan to improve our sewer systems over time. Another thing, Councilman Payne constantly, constantly, on Mr. Alzak, the consultant in charge of water sewer utility, about making sure that these contractors, because unfortunately we don't have the capacity to do this in-house, but he's been pushing that those, and he votes no a lot on these issues, until they start to hire more Newark workers. And while we support him on voting no, we're also, we also try to move the, the actual improvements that need to be done, but we also stand with him, because he's been the leader on that, that they need to, because we spend so much money with these companies, they need to hire and train more Newark residents.
Well, okay, I wholly, hardly agree. Thank you, Councilman Payne, for voting no. Yes, we do need to improve the sewer, because it shouldn't be running in people's basements. But at the same time, how about if we, since this is a twenty-year projection, then how about even if the union, since maybe we don't have enough stock for this, we should be training people?
Absolutely.
You know, DJ and Jeffrey, they'll be more willing to start next week, you know, school is out, it's going to be hot.
And to be very honest with you-
Soon as they leave the Moet site, they could go right to the training at one-thirty.
We agree with you a hundred percent. We agree with you a hundred percent. I've even submitted resumes to some of these companies. Unfortunately, maybe, maybe we need you out there, we'll tell you some of these sites that they're going to be at, and, and we can start to, you know, put some community pressure on these people also.
And last thing, are they, are they all union shop, though?
They're all union.
So they have to be.
I think they have to be to do this. To do this type of work.
So Councilman Payne, since you are, and I'm going to be quiet, since you're doing the right thing, can we have a union meeting then? Because I think we need to do that on all diaspora, and I'll be quiet.
What, what we've, what we've found out in this exercise is that, you know, we have, we have been critical of the companies, we have been critical of the administration moving forward in that area, but we're finding out that the, the problem is, is getting people into the union. So that's where our focus is, has been as of late, to try to get people to qualify to be in the union. So we're going to continue that fight, and, you know, really, we agree with everything you say, and really preach it to the choir in that respect, because this is something that we, you know, I appreciate Councilman James pointing it out, but it's something that we all feel very strongly about.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Maria Gotchak, I live at that offending property fifty-one, fifty-three Farley.
I'm sorry, could you start all over again? Because you talked, and then you moved your head.
It's okay. Maria Gotchak, I live at fifty-one, fifty-three Farley. So the, my question is, there is a mess in the South Ward, but my long, my long-term question is, are these plans available for public perusal? I understand they take ten, fifteen years, so that the neighborhoods can get a sense of the timeline and where they fit in. I'm on the super neighborhood council in my neighborhood, and a common complaint repeated over and over again in our ward is, we're the forgotten ward, we're always at the end of the list.
Which ward is that?
And we prefer not to be at the end of the list with serious problems like this.
What happened, she's on Farley, so it's actually-
And the second, the second suggestion is, not just union, et cetera, et cetera, but
put, put proximity hiring perimeters on the subcontractors, so that a subcontractor must employ fifty percent residing within a mile of appropriate skill level and training. And a third follow-up suggestion on that is, that the master level in job training, that people can get certified, a certification program, if I have done plumbing as an individual for ten years, that I can be examined by a certified master plumber. The D O L used to have the criteria, eight hundred hours of work, that this can be done free for residents in this community. We're often excluded from jobs because of the hiring requirements.
Absolutely.
Let's look at those requirements, squeeze the box so it fits our residential pattern, and let's evaluate our skills according to norms.
Madam President. Thank you. Councilman Rice, and Councilman James.
Yeah, I wanted to address two of her, two of her concerns. One is, I think she asked if, if the architectural plans are on file. I believe as soon as, as soon as they apply for, as soon, as soon as they apply to the city for any kind of permits, or, or for tax abatements or the like, they have to file certain information. That information automatically becomes open to the public, and so you have to Oprah it, Open Public Records Act, it, in terms of the request, through the clerk's office, but that, that information, yes, is on file.
It is.
Super neighborhoods, average citizens, block associations can procure that information. And the second question regarding even the subcontracting, the state really still controls that. I think this council got a very good enlightening conversation from Gus Henenberg and a few other people, that even at their base level of subcontracting and meeting those, those, those targets, the union requirement and state statute law in terms of hiring and those kind of things, it's controlled at the state level. So as a council, as Councilman Payne said, we share your frustration. I think oftentimes, we need to organize some of the folks we had that come here, to go to the assembly, and go to the senate, and go to the governor, and talk about changing statutory language, so that we can do some of the things we need to do here at the local level. I think that's the key for us, and I think part of what we have to do as a body is to maybe educate the electorate a little bit better than we do, to talk about how do we change those kind of things, and put pressure on the folks that we support for assembly and for senate who get elected, to start making the changes we need to make to hire Newarkers.
Councilman James.
I just wanted to, uh-
Councilman James.
I, Councilman Rice, you, you said it, so I'm not going to repeat, but there's one key line that you said in your comments that we get tagged on all the time, and that's what I believe the councilman is seeing when he's running with, running into with the unions. That line of appropriate skill level and training, we need to reword that somehow, because that's how they, that's the line they use to, to lock out our residents, to keep our people out. They use that over and over. So as we go to, like as he said, as we go down to the state, and we fight the state level, that's one of the major lines that keep us from allowing our residents to, to enter in, is, is that, is that line. So I, she's not going to have the discussion.
No, you can't come back. You get, you get one, one time. I'm, I'm sorry. During the public hearing, you get one opportunity. Please feel free to contact. Now, wait, wait. Excuse me?
Ma'am, what I will do is take your information, and because you're resident of my ward, you and I can sit down and talk, and I can explore more information.
Absolutely. Next speaker.
Okay. My name is Tenfor Evan, one forty-nine hundred and Terry, five-five Elizabeth Avenue, P O Box twenty-three, six to seven. My question is, on all this end, we are talking about super neighborhood and the energy and the sewer. All I want to say one thing, are we have these people for these sewer clean outs, just like we had a tornado with these trees and all this stuff go into the grug? I want to know, if we've got money going out, and we're building them for more bill, let's see what we can do to help clean this out. Because we had a flood, when we had them tornado come in, all that drain coming in those sewer, that what we talk about when you add money to the bill, to add more money to, for the clean out. So I want to know, are we going to be pressing this issue here? Are we going to be passing for money to doing this? And what are they doing?
Thank you.
For the sewer cleanup, that's already in our, in, in our budget, one of the things that I, I have done personally, and, and, and I've asked a lot of my staff members, when we see drains at a clock, I try to log it, and you do very well, a very good job of logging problems, please, any drains that you see, I've made a motion myself for every drain in the city to be cleaned, and that was just kind of a, a large motion that I made, an effort trying to be, yeah, for the whole city, but if there are specific ones, that's something our water and sewer department should be doing on a daily basis.
I called, I called Mr. Zeit the day, it was a drain plug on Renner Avenue that out that day.
I will make another motion, Renner Avenue drains, at the-
And, and I expect Mr. Zeit, like I say, I called him today, he called me after I left the house, but I expect, if you got people out there, I expect them getting paid for this, they should be, they should be following this up.
I agree, and like I said, I made a motion for the entire city drains to be cleaned. Obviously, that motion wasn't carried through, but we, if there are specific ones that you need us to follow up on, we will do that. So bring that list to us.
Councilman Amador. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Well, I haven't finished, don't kind of rush me out, Ms. Evans.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you finished. You, you said, these are my questions.
I can take my time.
That's right, don't rush me when I'm talking, because I'm not rushing them, you don't rush the other people, so don't rush Tenfor Evan.
No, I did not.
And when he finished, I will sit down.
Absolutely. I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak now?
Yes.
My, my, my sense of frustration on this issue goes a little further than, than what we've been talking about, and, and it gets into, for those of us who've been around for, for quite a while, and have gone through the battles of, for example, of building an arena, not building an arena, and spending two-hundred-and-ten-million dollars of public money, or not spending two-hundred-and-ten-million dollars of public money, my sense of frustration comes from picking up the newspaper from, from time to time prior to, to the, to the, the fact that, that the arena was allowed to be built, or the decision was made for the, the arena to be built. And I read the comments made by elected officials and residents outside of the city of Newark, and they all said the same thing, and basically, and, and I apologize if I'm very blunt, but they all said, Newark, go to hell, spend your own money, do whatever you want to do with the money. Well, what happened was that, in the majority of the cases, the money that was spent in the arena, for example, the two-hundred-and-ten-million dollars, if you look at the number of Newark residents that worked in there, and we have the list, and the list was provided to us, and to, and somehow, I'm, I'm a little satisfied with the number of Newark residents who worked there, but I think we should have done better based on the fact that we spent over two-thirds of the cost of, of the arena came from the taxpayers' money, Newark taxpayers' money. So that is a perfect example of not to do things the next time we have the, the opportunity to spend that kind of a money on a project like that, that's basically a private project.
Got it.
My frustration comes from the fact that we were not very forceful, and only after the fact, and that's the reason why Mr. Henenberg came before us, it was after the fact that we reacted, we should have reacted before the fact, and made sure that those folks had the responsibility to oversee the construction of that, that project, hire as many Newark residents as possible, and that didn't take place.
What does this have to do, no. I was looking to see what you're doing. Roll call to adopt, Mr. Clerk.
No one else appearing, Madam President. This is on item E, the sewer utility capital improvement, bond ordinance, no one else appearing, a motion to close the hearing, adopt the ordinance, second reading, final passage, council to hold.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Santana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I know, I'm gonna go home. Donna Jackson, 128 Smith Street. Does this $11 million bond also include fire hydrants, et cetera?
Yes, I do believe it does.
Okay, so could we kind of like have an emergency, I know this is gonna pass, so that's one good thing. I know many Newark residents won't be putting a new hydrant in, you know, okay. I could argue about that for 40 minutes, but it's gonna still happen.
No, no, no.
But we still have a lot of fire hydrants.
No, this does not cover fire hydrants. Fire hydrants comes off the budget, the regular budget.
The regular budget, and it's...
The bond is appropriated specifically for special jobs related to the sewer utility...
There's, yes, we are. With, however, I mean, there is a clause in, I had the attorney who works for my office review this, and there is a clause that says, and other related expenses, and that allows the latitude to include fire hydrants. That's the phrase that gives it latitude.
Well, I just want to say then, could we kind of co-work with the fire department here, because I know there are some 300 fire hydrants that have been an issue in the city forever, and there's probably another 200 now that don't work since then.
Ms. Jackson, if you have any specific locations, forward it to any of our offices.
Well, that's why I'm saying, let's co-talk with the fire department, because they do have an extensive list.
You know, anytime we get a complaint on a hydrant that's not working properly, or, you know, they've been pretty responsive. So if you do have specific locations, you could forward it to any...
I could say today, literally today, I saw a fire truck on Clinton Place in Hawthorne, checking, he was just running it to see if it runs, let it run for a little bit, and then he shuts it off, moves on to the next hydrant. So the fire department must have, they're already being proactive, looking at that.
Right, so I'm just saying, the only thing I'm really asking, then, that they do have a list.
Yes.
Because I attended a meeting about a year ago of fire hydrants that don't work, and I know at that meeting, there were over 250 that did not work citywide.
No, they should know.
And I just wanted to ask that we co-merge those two lists so that we attack those first, because I know, like, for example, on Telford Street where the back of my house is, that fire hydrant hasn't worked in 10 years. Thank God, those townhouses have never caught fire, thank God, I've never, knock on wood, had a fire at my residence where I needed to use it in the back. However, the house adjacent to mine at 131 Smith Street, they did have a fire in the ladies' kitchen, and the hydrant on Smith Street did work, but the Telford hydrant does not work and has not been repaired.
Have you reported to anybody yet?
Yes.
To who?
The fire department has a list of non-working fire hydrants, and there is a list also at the water department. So I did make the two calls, it's been on the list forever. I'm just, I'm not really, I'm not fighting with you guys on this, I'm just saying that I attended a fire meeting last year, there was a comprehensive, before they did the budget thing, and they did have a list of citywide fire hydrants that did not work. So I was just, if this did include the fire hydrants, particularly with the power outage that we had last week, with the trees that were falling, and we did have, you know, not many fires, which was a blessing, that we don't need to have fire hydrants in the areas where we may have problems working. And just lastly, I'd like to ask the residents, in conjunction with us, to help us keep the sewers clean. I'd like to make a public service announcement now, if I could.
Yes.
We all remove tree and rubble from the sewers in front of our houses and at the corner, in an effort to help the city. We see, it's been a week now, the trees are still laying around in some areas. However, we as residents have to pick that up, and then what I will ask from the city, though, is that when the residents do clean and have additional garbage bags at our curb, it seems that the sanitation department is on some kind of garbage rationing now. If you have more than four bags out there, they won't pick them up. So I think we need to work hand in hand to try to keep the city clean and keep the sewers clean until Councilman James comes around with the truck citywide and cleans all the sewers.
Thank you.
You have that. Madam President, to add something to what, to add something to, just to add something to what Ms. Jackson was saying, I think that one of the biggest problems that we...
Now, it's gotta be a new moon.
To add something to what she was saying, I think one of the biggest problems we have, especially around this time when it rains and rains a lot, all the garbage that is on the street piles up on top of the catch basin.
We need to be...
And the sweeper passes by, and they purposely avoid the catch basement going around. This looks ugly, and you don't have supervisors coming around right in back of the sweeper and looking at this and pointing it out to them? I can take you to any street in the city of Newark where this is occurring right now, and the supervisor doesn't see this? Come on!
Okay, I have a question that, my name is 10-4 Evan, 555 Elizabeth Avenue, 14900 and Tarrant, and as I say before, listen to me good. Number one procedure is, first of all, as we are cleaning up the city with the garbage and the breathe and the trees and the limb, number one, if these people who's in charge of these limb cutting, when you tell them and write a list out for the people in the tree department to come and cut those trees for those tornado come, we won't have that problem. Now, I did that in March, and I did that in April, and unfortunately, who's in charge of that department? First of all, you got a man from Irvington, we live in Newark, he can't deal with Irving, no darn way, he can't deal with Newark. That's why all these trees came down last week, I had already took picture and gave a list of it. And I think we need to start getting on the ball, Council. I will be helping you with this here, I got a list of this here, I want to get involved with these people in charge of these departments. If they can't do the job, send them back to Irving. Thank you.
Send them back to where?
Stop, please. Thank you. Roll call for adoption, I don't see anyone else appearing.
No one else appearing, a motion to close the hearing, adopt the ordinance, second reading, final passage, Council of Hall, this is item F.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Going through the age of goodwill.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump.
Yes.
6PHSNFG, Title 23, Traffic and Parking, Clarion Lane, Parking Prohibition from Irvine Turner to Prince, anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing.
No one appearing, a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance, second reading, final passage, Council of Hall.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump.
Yes.
6PHSNFH, this is the Residential Parking Permit Ordinance, about visitor parking permits, adjusting annual license fees, et cetera, et cetera, which we have discussed on several occasions. Does anyone wish to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing.
No one appearing, a motion to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance, second reading, final passage, Amador.
Roll call.
Crump.
Yes.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes, finally.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump.
Yes.
Resolution, 7R1A, Brendan O'Flaherty Consulting Services for Financial Budgetary Matters, Council of Hall to adopt, discussed yesterday with the consultant, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Abstain.
Rice.
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump.
Yes.
7R1B, Contract for Janitorial Services, Fire Headquarters, Defer and Invite, Council of Hall.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Roan absent, President Crump.
Yes.
On that item, Madam President, the clerk staff has to elicit some information that the council wanted on this matter, on 1B. So noted, Cal, please. 7R1C, Maintenance and Repair, Glass Auto, Safety, Including Installation of the Product. 7R1D, Returning Offender Initiative Project. 7R1E, Maintenance and Repair of Acoustical Ceilings, Bid Contract, that's 1C, 1D, and 1E, Council of Hall to adopt.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador.
Yes, on D and E, abstain on C.
Yes.